Submitted in person or by telephone at six oh five eight eight two six two four eight. Or by calling six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven. Are there any conflict of interest items?
No.
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 None reported. Moving on to item number four. This is action to approve the July twenty second agenda.
So move.
Motion by Schwer, second by McElhaney. Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, that motion carries. Item number five is action to approve the July fifteenth minutes.
So move.
Motion by Johnson, second by McElhaney. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, that motion carries. We're now down to item number six, which is opening of bids for County Road four A asphalt resurfacing project. And a possible action to award the bids. Randy Falvey with our county highway superintendent is here this morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Thank you. As stated, this is to open bids for resurfacing, which is a two inch mill and overlay for our County Road four A. Thank you. Which is in Florence. It's a six block area. And we did receive a single bid from Denick. Incorporated out of Prinsburg, Minnesota. I'll put it back. Thank you, sir. And we do have a surety bond. Um, for mobilization excavation of a dig out area, which is in front of the fire department on Main Avenue in Florence, as stated, uh, replacements after milling two inches off of asphalt concrete. Uh, the dig out area is going to consist of a foundation built up of three inch rock with a base course over fabric. Uh, for a total bid of two hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and six dollars. That comes in on budgets. With a surety bond here and everything else. It looks like we're in good shape. So I would recommend that we accept this bid.
Move to approve by Johnson and a second by McElhaney to approve the bid from Denick in the amount of two hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and six dollars. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
Do you know on, uh, the South eighty-one project? There's still a bump at the start and the end. I'm assuming they got one more layer or not? Are they done?
Trying to think where on South eighty-one there.
Well, it starts right there by the roundabout and goes all the way just before you get to Cone's Corner.
Okay, that I'm not sure about yet. That's a state project.
State project.
Correct. And I did not talk to them.
I mean, it's really nice and wide, but yeah, there's a bump at the start and the end. So I would assume they got like one more.
Sounded like they had about another week's worth of work to do there. It's a touch up and whatnot.
Okay.
So I'm sure it'll be taken care of.
Right. Thanks, Randy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to our monthly reports. Cody just got here and she is just on time. Good morning. Look at that. All right.
Okay, um, perfect. You got the stats up there. Um, overall, things have been, uh, pretty status quo at the office. Um, referrals for pregnancy care. Um, this quarter, we had a total of thirteen that we received and we had eleven that were accepted. Again, we, um, follow up on with these moms like between five and six times about once a week. Um, so some of the numbers are going to be just a little bit off depending upon when we started contacting them to depending on when we actually got a hold of them and got them on. Um, the majority of our referrals come from Medicaid and from the WIC program is normally where we get the majority of those from for so. Um, overall, our current caseload at the end of June was fifty-five moms. That we have continued to see over the last three months, which was April, May and June, it averaged about fifty. Which was an increase from about six from quarter one. Quarter one was, um, just a little bit down below that. So overall, things continue to go up there. Um, immunizations, uh, we completed all the sheriff's office with their hepatitis B series that they needed. Um, we continue to contact people monthly for their immunization reminders. We held a um, MMR clinic in our office, um, and we still have MMR doses for people out in the public. So if they're wanting or needing to know their MMR vaccination status or wanting to get up to date, um, they can come and either call our office or come on in for that.
And just to clarify, that's measles, mumps.
Measles, mumps and rubella. Yes, sorry. Yes, yes. Um, and there's different, um, clinics and stuff that are throughout the state too. So if other people, they can contact their local public health office for some of that too. Um, I just checked, uh, the measles updated as of seven sixteen. Um, in South Dakota, there's a total of twelve cases. Um, eight in Lincoln County, two in Meade and two in Pennington, um, with one hospitalization. Um, all twelve, uh, in South Dakota have a vaccination status of either unvaccinated or unknown vaccination status. So uh, best way to stay, um, protect yourself and your family is to get vaccinated. So again, you can either call our office, um, to check on your immunization status. Um, or if you know you're not vaccinated, we can try and help get resources, um, to get you vaccinated with that too. So um, overall vaccinations, um, are down just a little bit this quarter than they were last quarter, which is pretty typical for the summer. Um, things get a little bit slower. They'll pick back up now next quarter and, and the very last quarter with school and things like that. Um, we're going to Florence to hold an immunization clinic before school starts and also the Watertown Intermediate School at their open house too in August. So we'll be at both of those offering immunizations for kids before school starts. So um, for school services, uh, Waverly finished up their, um, teen outreach program curriculum on the twenty-second of April. Uh, school services for next year, twenty-five through twenty-six, um, have been scheduled for Waverly, South Shore and Great Plains. And then Florence and St. Martins will get scheduled here, um, upcoming. So um, we've gone to quite a few different, um, conferences and education, um, topics. We went, Kai and I both went to an immunization conference that was in Chamberlain on June twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. And then we also went to, um, the South Dakota Immunization Conference on the twenty-third of April. That was in Sioux Falls. Um, Kaya got trained in the teen outreach program curriculum as well, so she'll be able to kind of help with that. Um, cause that's about a fourteen week course that we'll do, um, at two of the schools. So it gets to be a little long, so she'll be able to help out with that as well. Um, we went to the Splash into Summer event. We had games that were focused on like tooth brushing and immunizations and overall, that was a really great turnout. Um, we saw a lot of, a lot of different people there. So seemed like overall it went pretty well. Um, just some personnel changes. Um, I have started covering the dual office, um, for their services. Kaya is covering Grant County now as well. Um, and she is going to be going on maternity leave next week. So she will be out until the beginning of November. Um, so I will be taking over the, um, grant office as well. So things will be busy going forward. Yeah.
Do they have any questions?
That leaves your hours.
What are the questions? I have a question, Mr. Sheriff.
Uh, Commissioner Gable, go ahead.
Yeah, um, so if you're working for other county, doing several other counties, is that helping, um, is this, is that a state thing as far as expenses and?
Yeah. Yep. So it's just me that's just going. So it'll be, everything is, is state. Like I'll use a state vehicle and, and everything. Yeah. So none of that is coming from the county at all. Yep.
Commissioner McElhaney, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was just wondering, does that leave your office short with, uh, the maternity leave coming up and everything or?
Um, it shouldn't be too bad. I go to, I'll go to Grant, um, just once a week. So I'll still be in Watertown four days a week. Um, and everything right now for dual county is just done, um, either over the phone or they come to my office. So um, it'll be with school services and stuff like that coming up. There is a little bit more travel that comes into it, but um, it's just one day a week that I'll be out of the office. Sarah will still be there all, um, five days a week. So she'll still be there to answer the phone and take appointments and things like that as needed. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Ready to go over your budget?
Yeah.
All right, let's do that.
Yeah. Um, okay, for, for line, um, four eleven for Sarah's, um, overall salary, I figured it with the four percent increase um, for COLA. And then I know you guys were doing that market analysis too, um, with, along with her, um, bonus for longevity. Um, insurance was just figured out from the numbers, um, that were provided. Um, for twenty-four, I just continued on with the cost of the rent. I hadn't heard anything with that changing at all, so I just continued with that. Um, line four twenty-five, um, I did decrease down to five hundred. Um, we had it at eight hundred last year. We haven't really used, um, all of that anytime previously. And I don't see anything for seen coming within that's going to need any big repairs or anything like that. Um, four twenty-six, our supplies I kept as is. Um, we use this money for extra things. Um, like when we went to the Splash into Summer event, we, um, bought games and prizes with it. Um, we do it for like our breastfeeding baskets when it's breastfeeding awareness month. Um, we get stickers when we go out and do immunization clinics. Um, and just kind of overall, just office needs and things like that. If, if there's ever, um, different prizes or games or things that we're needing for the kiddos. Um, four twenty-nine, I just left as is based off of money that was currently spent out of there. And then four twenty-seven, um, traveling, I did add just in a hundred dollars. Um, with Kaya being out for maternity leave, Sarah will be coming with me to some of the schools. Um, so just potentially some you know, reimbursement for lunches here or there, things like that. So I'll be utilizing her to come with me to help with some of those school services and flu clinics and stuff like that. So.
Uh, the only thing I would say is on that repair maintenance line, you drop that down to five hundred. Do we want to leave that at eight hundred? As we have in years past? And just put a cushion in there just in case?
We can, since I've been here, I've never, never, ever, I think the only thing that was budgeted out of it was we got, uh, we bought a chair. Yeah, I mean, we've never even come close to it.
Not spending.
Yeah.
This.
Okay.
Kind of close as soon to that.
And then we bought a chair. Um, our public health assistant needed a new office chair. And I expensed that out of there. Otherwise. Yeah, I, I mean, I haven't come anywhere close. I mean, if you want to leave it, Ken, but I'll give you three hundred dollars.
It's just once you take some of it, it's hard to get it back sometimes. So I just wanted you to.
On, uh, four twenty-nine, you know, uh, you expended eighty-one hundred and seventy, but you have twenty thousand. Is that?
And I have, I don't normally expend things out of that. I normally only expend out of the four twenty-five and, uh, four twenty-six.
It's more like insurances and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Okay. And we're, you know, we're just a little ways past halfway through. So you know, at eight thou- eight thousand, it should be about sixteen or seventeen thousand before the end of the year, I guess.
Yeah. And if you look at the twenty-four, twenty-three year.
Yeah, sixteen thousand.
Sixteen two.
Yeah, so it's pretty close.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, any more questions? Lee, did you have any questions? Commissioner?
No.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
All right.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Thanks, Fiona.
All right, let's move on to emergency management. Andrew Delgado, good morning.
Morning.
Morning. All right. Uh, over the last month, uh, there were three search and rescue calls for service, uh, one in Dave, one in Hamlin and one in Clark County. In addition, uh, search and rescue assisted PD, uh, with one of the two camp chance states. Uh, the other one is just a little, little on the cool side to go do, uh, anything out on the lake. Uh, Sherry completed and sent in the, uh, updated municipal contacts to, uh, state OEM, which is a statutory requirement. Uh, we both attended the crisis track training, which is a local emergency management performance grant, uh, requirement. Uh, in addition, went to nine-one-one, uh, meeting, the SAR, the search and rescue policy committee had a meeting, uh, our region meeting. And been to the fire department to, to run over or go over a couple of things, um, on a few different occasions. In addition, uh, Sherry went to the South Dakota Emergency Management in-person board meeting in Sioux Falls. And I completed, uh, independent study seven zero three. Um, now I have just one final in-person class, uh, to get the advanced professional series, uh, certificate, which is a six-year requirement or requirement after being here for six years, uh, for our L E M P G. Yeah, but that, that's all I have for.
Questions? Sure. Um, just one thing that I wanted to say, Andrew, is, um, are we making sure that the someone is around if you're out of town to cover severe weather? We, you know, that's a concern that.
Yeah, and sure, yeah, um, especially that weekend, um. Uh, you know, and I, that's on me. I called the weather service, uh, earlier in the day before all of that stuff touched off. And they were like, you know, we're really anticipating everything to be the east or, yeah, to the east and south of you. So um, I didn't, uh, didn't necessarily, uh, get too excited about it. And then, uh, I don't know, it was
Smacked.
A little, little bit closer than, uh.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, if, you know, I would just say that if you're going to be gone, maybe make sure that Sherry's around or
For sure.
Somebody's around to make those decisions.
Absolutely.
Not digging for someone at the last minute.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, uh, budget.
All right, uh, four eleven. I mean, mostly figured for four percent increase, uh, also, uh, figured for like fewer on-call hours for, uh, for the, you know, backup to Sherry. Um, but also, uh, trying to increase that to thirty dollars an hour as opposed to, uh, currently, which is twenty dollars an hour. I mean, it's typically Jamie and I mean, he's done his professional development series and stuff. I mean, he's experienced with it. So uh, hoping that we can get that, uh, change made for next year. Um, not really any significant changes. Um, if you look at line four fifteen, um, I, I know that we're well below that, uh, currently for this budget year. Uh, but that just adds flexibility. Uh, right now I'm not on the county health insurance plan, but um, I might move to that next year. Uh, dental slight decrease just based on the plans that we're currently on, um, and then no significant changes to any of the other lines in the, uh, in lines four eleven through four seventeen. Uh, if we go down to the next section, uh, insurance, I decreased that slightly just based on what our expenditures have been for past years. And then we've also been trying to ensure that we don't have anything that's covered for more than it needs to be. Uh, so been trying to keep that um, fairly consistent. Um, line four two two, um, professional services. In the past, a lot of these, uh, the expenditures, uh, were coming out of the supplies budget. Um, this would be stuff like, uh, connecting point, um, our NICSAL, who's responding. Copier contracts, like recurring things that are not um, that are not actually supplies, tangible things. Do we need to get that?
No, it's potential spam.
Gotcha. Um, moving down, I mean, uh, the supplies budget, I decreased that, um, just based on a lot of the, a lot of that going to the professional services line item. And then no changes until the capital outlay. Uh, I put fifty thousand there for, uh, new emergency management vehicle. Uh, just the current one is model year in twenty seventeen. Um, from time to time, the, the differential, like especially while backing and turning like kind of starts making some vibrations and, um, check engine lights on about half the time and, and, uh, this, the display screen is starting to not turn on from time to time. So uh, just with that being our only vehicle and, uh, there being times that we absolutely need it, um, it's, uh, probably better to, to try to stay ahead of this and, uh, make sure that we don't have, uh, significant downtime with that vehicle. In addition, we can, uh, trade that in while there's still residual value ideally.
What is that vehicle?
A Ram twenty-five hundred.
It's the white one? I didn't say that.
Yeah, you did. Okay, anything else, Andrew?
Um, and then, yeah, with the, uh, two five six, there's, uh, no changes there.
I, I wanted another question here for, uh, on the, um, murder of that professional services. You know, you, you've got it up to eighty-six hundred dollars is what you propose.
Yep.
And, uh, budget for the current year. What, well, you expended forty-six hundred and sixty dollars so far this year. Is that based on that? Is that what you're looking at? Uh, where did you come up with eighty-six hundred dollars?
Not exactly, uh. So I mean, there, there are some things that's come out at different times of the year. Uh, so I, I figured in the NICSAL contract, which is a once annual expense, the who's responding, uh, contract, which is a once annual expense, and then the recurring expenses from connecting point and the copier contract.
Okay, I just, I just saw that in the top there, so.
Yep. And, and I took most of that out of the supplies liner. I figured for a decrease there since that's what it previously came out of.
Okay, what'd you say? Search and rescue?
Yeah, search and rescue.
Yeah, I got it.
And then no changes to search and rescue.
All right, well, that was easy. Thank you. Anything else?
Nope.
Nothing. Okay.
I have a question.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thanks, Andrew.
All right, let's get Sheriff Howell up here. Get this report. Good morning.
Morning. I'm Sheriff. How's it going today?
All right, Brad. It's too hot.
Too hot. Supposed to be a warm one today, it sounds like. Heat advisory and all that fun stuff.
Corn lights.
Corn lights.
Corn lights, yeah.
Yeah, the court definitely liked it.
Dry for a little bit.
Beans is kind of fine, but.
Corn lights.
All right, start with the monthly report here. If you guys want to grab one and pass it down. All right, monthly commissary balance sheet for the end of June twenty twenty-five. Uh, the bank balance end of June twenty twenty-five was twenty thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty-six cents. At the time snapshot was taken, there was two thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars and ninety-two cents in the lobby ATM booking kiosk for grand total twenty-two, seven forty-seven, forty-eight. Break that down a little further, resident balances was two thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents of that. Three thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty-six cents was commissary items. Um, that were dispersed there. Uh, the fund balance was hanging at seventeen thousand, three ninety-eight, sixty-four. Bring us back to our twenty-two thousand, seven forty-seven, forty-eight. If you jump down to the bottom, you see a total commission that, uh, we earned was two thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty-six cents. And that was commissary phone and kiosk commission. We jumped to the next page on our check in a town. Bank balance end of June twenty-five was thirteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents. Uh, if you jump on down to the middle there, you'll see there was twenty dollars in fingerprint, fingerprint fees that were collected. Uh, sixteen dollars in copy fees that were collected and twelve thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty-three cents in sheriff's fees that were collected, four hundred dollars in warrants fees collected. For grand total twelve thousand, eight ninety-nine, twenty-three. That leaves us back to our eight eighty-nine, fifty. Go to the next page. Looks like Lee's already getting ready to pull it up on the screen here. We'll talk about some of the sheriff's office activity in June of twenty-five. We had six hundred and fifty-six cases and calls for service. You can see that's a lot higher than April, May, March, even February. So it's definitely been busy. If you look about a year ago, we're right on pace, a couple of calls away from what we were a year ago in June. Um, responded to sixteen accidents and accident reports that were completed. There was sixty-two warrants that were served, one hundred and ninety-two civil papers that were served. And, uh, two thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven transport miles for a total of eleven trips and thirteen people that were transported. Scroll down to the middle of the page there, you'll see some of the jail activity that we went through. Our average daily population for the month of June was forty-eight point nine seven. Our high average daily population was fifty-eight. And that was in the beginning of the month on the second. The low ADP was forty-one and that was on the twenty-second. On the twenty-four seven program, on the SCRAM bracelet, we had seventeen participants, eleven people on the remote breath. Thirty-nine people on the twice daily PBT. And forty-six people on the twice weekly UA and zero people on the sweat patch for a grand total of a hundred and thirteen people on our twenty-four seven program. And it was one hundred and seventy-four bookings for the month of June. Looks like it's a little bit down compared to May and April, but kind of staying within that same range-ish. Scroll on down to the bottom of the page there, you'll see month of June, we collected thirteen thousand, four hundred and eight dollars and sixty-nine cents in out of county contracts. One thousand, one hundred and forty dollars for work release fees. Twenty-four seven feeds collected were seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars and SCRAM fees collected were three thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. We just finished up last week, our Sheriff's Academy. We did it for three days and we partnered with the Boys and Girls Club. And had a good group of kids that were able to participate in that. We went to Lake Hurriate Tech and we got to use their driving simulator. We spent some time at the extension building, going over some of the equipment that we have and, uh, we did several different classes with our, um, participants. So it was a good, good opportunity to be able to connect and hopefully we have some future law enforcement corrections officers that'd be interested in, in our field. So in the jail side of things, we just finished up, uh, PPCT, pressure point and control tactics and TASER training, um, with our staff there and so that kind of some of the training that we've been doing. Finished up firearms with the deputies for, we get first half of the summer, then we excuse me, we'll do another one here, uh, this fall. So another firearms training coming up here. So any questions there before we dive into the next?
I back up, I, that's, I think sometime here, just in the, in the last two days or weeks anyway. They're trying to, um, resurrect the, uh, transport of prisoners with some uh, community mobile this, uh, uh, vehicle or something like that. Did you see that or what is that?
I'm not sure what.
I don't know. Counties were trying to organize, you know, like we used to have.
Prisoner transport.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, the state act, well, not the state, Pennington County actually has a Penn bus that runs back and forth across the state twice a week.
That might be the one that they're talking about.
We use that quite frequently when we have people out West River. We'll make a trip and, uh, we'll pick them up at Sioux Falls when they get here. They come here Tuesdays and Thursdays and then Wednesdays and Fridays, they're working their way back. They make stops throughout the state and here, Chamberlain. Um, little facilities throughout the way.
So we are using it.
Yep, yep. We use that, uh, reg- quite regularly. So.
And if you, uh, and you watched the, uh, news yesterday, they had a, a quite a array of difference. Uh, oh, like the TASER and then they've got the, uh, uh, the one that shoots the the tear rat gas thing. They're, the Sioux Falls Department was apparently going through all of the different pieces of new equipment that they have now.
Yep.
And that was kind of interesting. All of the, uh, well, they, they say they tried to deter the the one that's doing the, the crime without hurting them, you know?
The less lethal options.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
There's definitely a lot of those out there. Like I said, those are things that we're constantly looking at when we're, um, looking at the options that are out there and availability for our officers too. And like I said, we're actually going to talk about TASER here in a little bit too.
Good, good.
Okay, if there's no questions, let's move down to your budget. Let's do that first and then we can talk about TASER.
Let's start with the sheriff's budget because it's on top. We got four of them to go over here. So on the sheriff's budget there, uh, the only thing, most of the things I've just left the same. So if we talk about it, that'll be the change. So on four eleven wages, that top little part there, I did a budget of four percent COLA. I budgeted for the, you know, per CPIU for the wage study there. I included all our step increases throughout that period there. Overtime, part timers, transports, shift pay, call pay, holidays, snow days. Transports, shift pay, call pay, holidays, snow days, all those different type of things, so um. That's where that number comes from. Line four fifteen health insurance, budgeted a ten percent increase. Line four twenty-one on sheriff and insurance, I increased that four thousand dollars. It seems like that's been. Rising every year, and it's just kind of a guess of where we're at on that, and when we get to the jail one, you'll see the change on that one too. So yeah, I'm just kind of guessing on what where that's gonna be each year. Line four twenty-five repairs and maintenance, I increased that six thousand seven hundred and forty-two dollars. Uh, some of that's for ZERKER fees, each year it goes up five percent, connecting point. Fees, data pilot, leads online, guardian, higher click, state NCIC, just a lot of programs and a lot of software that we have. Um, plus vehicle repairs are getting more expensive. Currently have one in the shop right now, it's getting some um major engine work done, so. Seems like those things are getting more expensive. So if you jump on down to four twenty-six point two, the uniforms, we increased that three thousand dollars. Um, planning on getting three more vests for the full timers and. Some of that's a big increase from the negotiations that they did in twenty-four that started in twenty-five, that wasn't budgeted, so we're a little behind this year. And then also getting our. Part-timers outfitted and our reserves, keeping their equipment up to date. Line four thirty-four machinery, equipment, I increased that twenty-six thousand four hundred dollars. Uh, vehicle prices are getting a little higher on everything. I did plan for two patrol vehicles and equipment, two office computers, a new rifle for the sniper. Um, looking at doing the LPR license plate reader technology for our vehicles and our maybe a couple of stationary cameras that are built into that. And then it's also our contract for uh body cams and car cams in our storage that's built into that one as well. And I included the TASER price that we're gonna talk about into this for next year as well. Otherwise, if I didn't talk about the line item, I just left them the same.
Brad, I have a question about the four twenty-six ten, that's the gas line there.
Okay.
So that went up to eighty-eight thousand dollars for next year?
That I left the same, it was eighty-eight thousand this year, with the numbers kind of going up and down there. We raised it up a little bit last year.
Same.
So yeah, I left it the same this year, just kind of see if this year stays with all the volatility with the tariffs and everything. I didn't know if that was gonna be affected, so.
Okay. It looks like in twenty twenty-four, you expended about fifty-eight thousand of that?
That, yes.
That right?
Yes. So there might be a little bit extra there.
Okay.
But like I said, we don't use it, it'll go back to the budget, so.
Okay.
And then like I said, next year I'll reevaluate to kind of see where this year is after we kind of level out with all the tariffs and whatnot, so.
Yeah. All right, let's move on to the jail.
Jail budget there, um. Same thing, four eleven on wages there, budgeted a four percent COLA uh per the CPIU wage study. Uh, included step increases, overtime, part-timers, transport, shift pay, holidays, snow days, um, all that good stuff. One thing with the new facility that we're looking at here, we had a cook that retired. And I was looking to turn her spot into a correctional officer spot here, maybe even towards the end of this year. And then looking to add one new full-time correctional officer next year, so we're staffed when we're ready to go with our new facility. So. Line four fifteen health insurance, budgeted a ten percent increase. Line four twenty-one jail insurance, increased that fifteen thousand, trying to keep up with. Inflation, we've been behind a couple of years, so like I say, it's just same thing as a sheriff's office one, it's kind of a guess, I don't really know where it's gonna be, but. You can see we're we're ways behind right now. Uh, four twenty-two jail professional services, I increased that five percent, that's for advanced correctional healthcare. Um, and also added in medical record software, this, our. Medical company keeps trying to push us towards going digital with our medical records and whatnot, so. Uh, something that we're kind of negotiating with them a little bit right now to be able to make that happen, so. That's included in that jail professional services there. Jail uniforms, uh, we increased that four thousand one hundred dollars, it's due to the increased uniform allowance in twenty twenty-four and their negotiations. Four twenty-six point two kitchen supplies and food, um, consolidated correctional food service, of course, their contract goes up five percent every year. Um, then we kept an extra five thousand dollars in there for equipment, repairs and replacement. We have some old. The freezer in there has been on the fritz and we're trying to make do until we get our new facility, so we're trying to make sure that that. So we had to put a little bit in there in case that does.
Yeah.
Die out on us, so. Line four twenty-eight utilities, uh, we decreased that sixty-one thousand dollars. Um, been working with Steve here on maintenance, he's gonna put that into his budget. One of the reasons with that is. Uh, that's the electric and that also pays for the courthouse building and for that building. And then we're gonna be moving here eventually, you know, a year, two, couple of years, he'd end up taking over that anyway, so we're just doing that switch right now. Uh, we still have some in ours for phones, internet, with television, et cetera. We jumped down to line four thirty-three jail improvements, we decreased that fifty-five thousand dollars. Um, we are still looking, we've left some in there, cause we're looking to buy some radio equipment. And we have to update our mattresses, all of the stuff that would be used at our new facility, so um. We did leave some in there for the jail improvements on there, plus we still have issues that are happening in our facility. Just yesterday, we had a pipe burst and flood our EOC. And so there's still still jail improvements and issues that we have to be dealing with as we're still dealing with building a new facility, so. And line four thirty-four jail machinery and equipment, I decreased that twenty thousand dollars. Um, still gonna keep the body cameras in there and computers and that we buy every year annually, and um also included our TASER. Contract amount in that jail machinery and equipment, but still able to decrease a little bit. Any questions on that one? The twenty-four seven, if you want to jump to that one. That one's actually pretty quick and easy. I left everything the same except for jail wage, the four eleven. And then the health insurance, the same thing with the jail wage, did a four percent increase and. For COLA, um, the step increases overtime and all that good stuff into the four eleven and health insurance we budgeted. Uh, it's like a ten percent on there as well. And the last one, the youth at risk, um, I just left that the same at five thousand dollars. Uh, what that one's for is if we have to house a juvenile in Sioux Falls or the Minnehaha Juvenile Detention Center, it's about five hundred dollars a day there to hold a juvenile. So that would cover about ten days worth of the stays, but we uh try to do everything in-house here to save those expenses.
Right, appreciate that. Any questions, commissioners? Nope, a lot of good information there. Thanks, Sheriff, appreciate it.
Thank you, Brad.
Thanks, Brad. I got a couple more on.
Right, you do, yeah. Uh, language line, that's not yours, is it?
We actually use that in the jail, it's a good stuff.
Yeah, we use it in the vendor too, so we'll come back to that one. Uh, item number ten is action to approve purchase agreement with Axon for tasers for the sheriff's office.
Okay, Axon for TASER, what we're doing is we are looking at upgrading. Uh, currently I buy two tasers every year, it's an older model, I've had them for a long time, um. It's technology, so what I've been doing is I budget for two of them each year and then the equipment and supplies to be able to train our staff. Everything looks like it's going towards contracts and. Trying to deal with that, which is kind of fun and different, but uh we did do some pricing and we're looking at doing a five-year contract with Axon. For tasers, it'd be for fourteen tasers, a couple for the jail and twelve for the deputies and myself. And that number is seventy-three thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty cents for five years. Um, it actually broke down to five and a quarter years, so I'd do a small payment this fall here at forty-seven hundred dollars. And then for the next five years, we would pay thirteen thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-two cents. Uh, something that I budget between the sheriff's office and the detention center. It's a little bit more than what I am currently budgeting for how we do it now. But looking at the technology and this is a newer model facility, it comes with a VR virtual reality headset for. Training purposes of our staff, because we're, the fundamentals of the new TASER are gonna be a little bit different on how they operate, so being able to train there. So that'll be something that we'll have, comes with unlimited live cartridges, so if we expend a cartridge. They'll automatically send us new cartridges, comes with our live training cartridges and duty cartridges for training as well. That's something that's all built into the contract, um, our batteries, annual training cartridges, the five-year warranty, it covers everything. At the end of the five years, this equipment would be ours, um, but we would own these tasers and the leftover equipment that we have.
So Brad, give us the specifics on that contract again. We don't have copies of that.
Oh, yeah, I can, sure.
Uh, seventy-three thousand, five years.
Five years, seventy-three thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty cents. I would pay a small portion at this fall here, just so I can get some of that equipment, we could start training our staff, cause it's gonna take a little bit of. Training to be able to change everybody over, so this year there would be forty-seven hundred dollar payment, and then for the next five years. A payment of thirteen thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-two cents.
Have you budgeted for that increase?
I have, yeah, I budgeted for it in both the sheriff's and jail budgets. To cover for all the training and everything going for them.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, so we'll make a motion for in the amount of seventy-three thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty cents to accept the five-year contract with TASER. Commissioner Gable made the motion, second by Commissioner McElhaney. Any further discussion on that?
How how, do we wanna break that down? You know, for the ongoing budget of thirteen eight? You know, do we wanna take budget the whole thing at one time?
Take it in one motion.
Take it.
Yeah. Take it in one motion, five-year.
Yeah, this is a five-year contract.
Yeah.
As a five-year contract.
Yep.
Okay, that's fine.
It's done. Okay, so if any more discussion?
That's the new version TASER?
Uh, TASER ten, the newest, yeah, has ten cartridges built into it, yeah.
And let's just be thankful he doesn't have Axon video and all that.
They are very, very.
Upward of over a million dollars.
Yes.
For a lot, so.
How how often do they update? We're gonna have this for five years, are they updating them, making them better every, how often?
They're constant, like the model that we have to the model, the the ten that we have, I think there's two or three models in between there, so and we've had these models for. Ten years, I'm betting, this style, um, and of course, they're saying they're gonna discontinue this model here soon. So we gotta look forward to new stuff, so.
Oh, no trade-in value, huh?
Yeah, that's something that we've looked at in Axon, they don't care, so. They see dollar signs, yeah.
All right, so all in.
Dr. Randy, maybe you can get it on that uh that site that he's been selling machinery.
Yeah, there you go.
We do have a a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Brad. All right, let's move on to item number eleven, this is action to approve purchase of. The cuffman cuffman arrest and control tactics training system.
All right, um, with that is basically a training dummy that has arms and whatnot, so. When our pressure point control tactics and TASER instructor is training a new employee, we don't have to have a couple of different employees down there. Um, this training dummy and system has a vest that we can discharge our tasers that we're gonna get into the vest and we'll be able to see that we have a good spread and then be able to. Place that person down and handcuff them and use some of our our training techniques on a on a dummy. Uh, gonna have less injuries on staff from the training, from handcuffing and proning out a position and um. Something that we've kind of looked at in in a new facility, we'd have a little better area to train with and something like you say, it helps reduce staff. When we have a new person, if you have one new person, you have to have at least two people to be able to train back and forth, so. It actually works out kind of good having a training dummy that's being able to have in there. Um, it has pockets, it has things built in, so we can place tools on there, we can do actual searches on that person, it's something that our jail staff and our deputies can use, so.
And we don't have any information on this either, so we don't know the amount.
It is six thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-five cents.
Do you have a motion to approve?
Is that a budgeted item, Brad?
This is a budgeted item.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Gable, second by Commissioner Schwer. Any further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Brad, can you get us copy?
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe email that to them?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
Yep.
All right, number, let's see, what else you got here, Brad?
I think that's all.
How about nine?
That's State's Attorney's Office, I think.
She sent me an email, so I can send that to you and I'll.
That's all you got?
All right, all right.
All right, so let's go to item number nine, discussion possible action to approve language line for courtroom interpretation.
He here, she has a map with Lisa Belt. And she's proposed an alternative to language lines, so the UJS has a contract with a digital interpreter service. And uh, I believe it sounds like that might be an avenue that she's going to investigate and then uh they will bill UJS and then the UJS will send us a monthly invoice. So uh, sounds like that's probably an avenue that she's going to try for now.
Okay, so no actions needed on that, we'll just move that. Okay, all right, uh, number twelve, action to approve claims for payment.
We have one today, and that is to Tigra. And the amount of twenty thousand six hundred eighty-eight thousand.
A motion to approve.
So I'll move.
Second.
Schwer makes the motion, second by Commissioner McElhaney, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Other budgets that we should kind of go through, will be some mandated sort of budgets that we do need to just go over.
Okay, let's go ahead and do that then.
He wasn't able to. So if you wanna go to his first. We don't do it next week, so we'll try to give plenty of these in, we'll do the non-happens at first weekend of August. We need to try to get the position we'll put together, so. Um, the former basically left everything the same, so his budget is the same amount as it was last year, so. That won't be too difficult at all. So if you wanna go to the very first tab in your book. These are not particularly in order, I'm sorry, they're kind of out of the cell with the place here, but. Um, collection, collection, agency, that one, I left the same as last year. Catastrophic legal, that one, I uh. Bumped up, obviously, that is you guys' you know, pool and that one is a considerable jump where now each order you pay in sixteen thousand or twenty-two. So I bumped that one up. Unemployment insurance budget, I just want to have a couple thousand on that one, you had a funny mission, so you just never know. Um, the domestic abuse women's resource, that is the amount that we pay quarterly to the Beacon Center. Uh, and that is based up from. There's less than this person gets that, those fees are considered, a portion of that goes to them. Our mentally ill, that one I increased a little bit, as you can see, we got pretty close last year, so I went up five thousand on that one. Um, development disabled, that one I left the same as last year. Our board of mental illness, I bumped that one up, five thousand as well, cause we were pretty close last year. So I, they're just, they don't know, so. Waterfall production, left that the same. And blood monitoring, left that one, so, so. That's all I have for right now.
What about the catastrophic legal?
Yeah.
That one, that one I bumped up, I think five thousand.
That really, well, that went from thirty thousand to seventy thousand.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, that is your into the pool, yeah.
That's the pool.
Yes, that one did take a drag.
That's a big jump.
Yes, you were paying sixteen thousand, now sort of. Was it under, close to three before, so yes.
Here again, I think that goes back.
Oh, nine-one-one, that one is a pass-through, but I did increase that one, uh, the five hundred and four, it was three seventy-five last year, it's just passing dollars because then.
Increasing the surcharge.
Election fees.
So, it just passed through, it just makes it, it's with them, we don't want to do a stop.
Just so people know, and Commissioner Gable can talk a little bit about clerk, maybe a little bit, but that is a necessary expense uh for the county. Uh, that has saved our hide a few times, so Commissioner Gable?
Definitely more as as CIA rate, or the court of attorney rates go up, um. You know, that that uh, that that's an impact on every county, so we pay into that insurance, it's gonna insurance pool. And as those costs go up, um, it's a state mandated thing too, so, and overall, though, we save money by being a member of the clerk.
And I and I realize that, yet I still think our legislators need to be made aware of these costs of these uh. Attorney fees and so on, oh, the judicial system is kind of getting out of hand. Uh, as far as I'm concerned, and and I think our legislators need to take a look at it. Uh oh, the judicial system is kind of getting out of hand, uh as far as I'm concerned and and I think our legislators need to take a look at it.
Well, I can tell you, like I did just send in what we paid the last year. And the or beginning of June to, beginning of July to end of June to the South Coast State Treasurer, so we'll see, we might get some compensation. Because I believe they did pass a bill a few years ago, we have received some compensation back because of that, but it, you know, helps.
It helps.
You know, if you have one homicide in your county, in your county, that, you know, that's a big deal, so those go into hundreds of thousands of dollars.
So that what's, so people know, Mr. Chair, just so people know, every every year the state designates a a rate, it's designated, I think, by the UJS of. What we pay, what each county will pay for a court appointed attorney, an hourly rate, that's it's lower than the market rate, but I I think it was about one hundred and twenty dollars for twenty twenty-five and it's it goes up roughly five dollars a year. Um so that's, that's. And it's again, it's kind of like, it's hard to know exactly where it's going to come down, it can be really high one year, it could be a little lower. It could take a time, it takes time to process some of these bigger clerk claims if we have a claim, so we're working through a large one right now. Back, so.
Yep.
Um.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Um let's move on to item number thirteen, this is action to approve automatic budget supplements. Item number sixteen, public notices, a quorum of commissioners could be in attendance at this week. Anybody have anything?
That'd be uh. A week to the twenty eighth.
Got a plan, you can reach him something up next Monday.
Monday night, yeah, twenty eighth. And that's already written into the agenda.
National night out is coming up, but that's not for a couple of weeks yet on.
Reminder, you can still not be leaving next, next Tuesday.
Oh, man. Okay, um all right, let's move on to old business. Anybody have any old business? Nothing? New business? Anybody have any new business? Anything for the open? Public comments? Nothing? Commissioner comments?
Hey, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Gable.
Yeah, just real quick, so we're, we've set the uh. I think it's pretty definite, but you consider it a little bit, just mark it on your calendar for a the the formal ground opening for the to begin construction on the jail. Um on the eighteenth of August, um right now we're staying eleven o'clock, so just put that on your calendar for now, um that's the likely date and time. August eighteenth, eleven.
August eighteenth at eleven AM. All right, got her down.
You're going to be on our formal interview. On Wednesday.
Well, yeah, 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 thank you, yeah. So, yeah, Toby Morris has been um doing a good job preparing. The county for uh with the for the bonds to start issuing the bond, so um. And Brenda and I will be on a call with um a representative from Moody's to get it with, it's part of the process to set the bond rating for the county. Um I think that from what I understand, talking to Toby and Brenda, please chime in. Um since our audit was so good, um a very clean audit, um that's going to help. Um and then overall, the state, it it's a state, the fact that the state has a very high bond rating helps as well.
Right. Anything, so when is that?
Uh we're, that call, the call is is tomorrow, it's just a a call, we do, we're going to do it by teams and so. Um I think, so Brenda and I will be on a representative from Moody's and Toby, Toby Morris from Colliers, who's our municipal advisor. It's kind.
Yeah. All right, let's move on to item number twenty.
I did have one other thing on the last Saturday, which would have been what, the twenty?
Nineteenth was that?
Nineteenth, I did attend the Sea of Goodwill, uh which is uh our. Veteran service officers, actually, they they ran the uh the the program, and it was excellent, pretty well attended, there was quite a few veterans there. But a ton of affirmation was given and I I just wish every veteran would be able to attend and they're going to try to repeat this. Uh at least every year for sure and uh you know, there's so many uh opportunities for veterans that I'm sure several don't even realize. And uh it was well attended and uh presenters were from the State Department and and uh local employees and so on and so forth, so it was good. Good, good program.
Right.
Commander, DSO officers for doing that.
Mr. Johnson, thank you. Right, we do have a need to go into executive session pursuant to SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two. Subsection three, which is preparing for contract negotiations, so look for a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by McElhaney, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
We are in executive session, thank you. Do not anticipate any action to follow.
So we leave the mic on so that we can stay on?
He's on the phone as well.
Yeah.